Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this special, welcome to this regular meeting of the Temple City Council for May the 3rd. You'll please rise. Chief Lunsell Wallace here yet? Yep, there's Chief, okay. Chief Wallace is going to lead us in our invocation, and Police Chief Gary Smith is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Wallace.
Please bow your heads. Today, Lord, as we celebrate the 56th Annual National Day of Prayer by gathering and observance held in public venues to pray for the nation, governmental leaders, media, church families, and schools, Lord help us remember our many soldiers and their families to make the many sacrifices to make our world a safer place for us to live. We pray in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, who paid the ultimate sacrifice that we might be free of sin, guilt, and shame. Lord, we thank you for your words which say, "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray, and see my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sins, and will heal their land." Please let us pray not only this day, but every day. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Chief.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Next item on our agenda is to recognize Youth Week, and we have Mr. Willie Capps from the Temple Elks Lodge Number 138 here to receive this proclamation and to tell us a little bit about the activities that they have going on for Youth Week. So, Willie, may I present this proclamation to you if I'm not welcome? Glad to have you here. Chris Small enough ame the glasses. How can I say that long?
Hey, Willie, you had your glasses on.
Well, I can't be that quick. I'm a cheater, so I can't be that quick. Okay, go ahead. From the office of the Mayor, City of Temple, this proclamation, whereas the Beveland and Protective Order of Elks has designated the week beginning May 1st as Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition to their services to community, state, and nation. Whereas Temple Elks Lodge Number 138 will sponsor an observance during that week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community. Whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. Whereas our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which we alone can give in order to help develop these qualities of character essential for future leadership. And whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help repair them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now therefore I, William H. Jones III, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1 through 7, 2007, as Youth Week from the City of Temple, Texas. And I encourage all citizens to honor the youth in our community by expressing appreciation for their accomplishments and to let them know that we are proud of them. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand and the seal of the City of Temple, Texas, this third day of May, 2007. Willie, on behalf of the City Council of Temple and entire citizens of our community, I thank you for the work that you do on behalf of the youth at Elks Lodge Number 148. Thank you, sir. You want to face that direction, Mr.?
Yes. Go ahead. What's your question? Good evening. I am Willie Capps, and I'm the past president of the lodge. Tonight at our lodge meeting, we'll be honoring 23 children from our community. We have 10 Eagle Scouts, four Girl Scouts who combined together sold 50 cases of Girl Scout cookies for the Streets for Soldiers program. We have six essay contest winners from Travis and Bonham Middle Schools, and three college contest winners who placed second, third, and fourth in state competition in their different age groups. Some of the things we've also did, annually, we pay out over $6 million in scholarships to kids, and second only to the United States government. We very heavily drug awareness. I personally give our hair program every year 40,000 pieces of anti-drug literature. And also, part of our drug awareness, we do baseball, soccer. We have a soccer shoot coming up here in June, so for all of our kids, boys and girls, under 14. They're coming up the lodge and have a shootout, soccer. We have district and state competition in those things. Also, we have a national youth shoot. National winners win a full four-year college scholarship. Also, on the veterans' front, the Elks Lodge, we're back in 1900 something, built, staffed, established, supplied, and then donated to United States Company the very first VA hospital. Also, back in early 1900s, we also did a program where we gave loans and grants to soldiers who'd earned from World War I. This project was assumed by United States Company, it's now the GI Bill. We also have five US presidents as members, including John F. Kennedy, Franklin Donald Roosevelt, Harry S. Truman, Warren G. Harding, and relatively his past few, George R. Ford. We do a lot for our community, and we will continue to do a lot for our community. Our state project, this one gentleman from tonight, Jeff, our meeting, we spent $10,000 the last three years to turn in, we bought him a wheelchair, paid for the van, and especially the vice versa, for the greatest legs. We provide, prospect, provide for any children in the state of Texas that do not have insurance or uninsured. And we spend about $300,000 annually on this project. We've already passed that $2 million, Mark. That's why our donations for the children grants. If your kid needs some help, give me a call, I'll see what I can do. Can't guarantee you anything, but I'll see what I can do. Thank you.
Willie, thanks very much for the work that you do. You make a significant impact on the youth of our community. Let me take this opportunity to tag on to that. Speaking of youth, I had the privilege last night to see a play at Temple High School, and today offered a proclamation for the cast members and staff of the Temple Independent School District involved in the one-act play Ruthless. They are on their way to Austin, Texas, in fact, they're probably there right now. They will perform as one of eight high schools in the one-act play competition for UIL on Saturday night at the University of Texas Bass Concert Hall. And we wish them the best. The play was wonderful, it was just hilarious, and we are very, very proud of the accomplishments that the students have had. And for them, it's like going to the state playoffs, and that's exactly what this is for theater. So, they are excited, their parents are excited, and for our entire community, we are excited for them. So, I just want to put that in there with Youth Week, and it's a great way to help to celebrate our youth in other ways. Next item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comments. Citizens who desire to address the council on any item may sign up to do so prior to the meeting. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please limit your comments for three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken on these items at this time. Two people signed up to speak, so we'll do ladies first, Ms. Betty Elliott. If you'll please come forward. Thank you. Okay, who's in trouble?
I think the Israeli.
I heard you, Sally. Who's in trouble?
Well, I'm for myself and for the other people at Sammies. I want to thank Mr. Jeter for the lovely fountain and the bench that he has graciously donated in memory of his mother. I am sure she likes it. We do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Mr. Edward Luna. Hooker down there.
Hello, I'm Edward Luna, and I'm here to thank the City of Temple for helping me get through the project of changing that name of that alley to the name Luna Lane. And I'd like to thank everybody here that's on the council, and the planning commission, and the guys that went up and put the signs up, everybody. And I'd like to thank Chester Thompson and Bobby Thompson for helping me round up a whole lot of signatures. They worked hard on getting the signatures. And I would like to accept that name change, not for just my family, but for people that you see on the display, because there's over 50 there, and most of them are gone now. But I'm sure there's a lot of, most of those are probably more deserving than our family to have, to be recognized. And I don't want anyone to think that, I think that my family's any more important than anybody else's, especially those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under this section consent are considered to be routine by the City Council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, it may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of a council member and be considered separately. Council, this is item 4A through, looks like M tonight, so are there any items that you wish to be removed for individual consideration or presentation or for voting purposes? Let's see. E. For E, are there any other items you wish to be removed from consent? There being none, I'll entertain a motion on items 4A through M with the exception of 4E.
Motion to approve. Second.
And motion, a second, to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of 4E. Further discussion? Madam Secretary.
Aye.
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 Next item on the agenda is item 4E. It's consider adopting a resolution authorizing an agreement with Strategic Advisory Group of Duluth, Georgia to develop a market and financial analysis feasibility study for expansion and/or renovation of the Frank W. Mayburn Civic and Convention Center for an amount not to exceed $89,300. Mr. Scrub.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, I'd be glad to go through a presentation or if the councilman has a question.
Ken, I would just like to say to the public that the money that we're spending is not only just, it's not just for a study that's going to sit on a shelf and see what we do from here on out, but it's money that's going to help spend the money that we've already allotted for the renovation and repairs needed at the Mayburn Center. And that with this information, it'll help us spend our money wisely in the areas and in repair what it's in need out there currently. And in addition, some additional information. So, it's not just a study, and then we'll wait every how many years to do some repair, but it's in efforts to let us know how we spend our money wisely.
Yeah, and I think that's right. When we went through the CIP process last year, we received funds to do probably nearly a half million dollars worth of improvements out there. And at the city manager's suggestion, and it made a whole lot of sense, that what we needed to do was not only look at the improvements we had in mind for renovations, which we think could actually, if we did everything out there the way it needs to be done, could be a million dollars, but also to consider the future of the facility in terms of the market we have now and the markets we think we should have in the future, and do we need to consider expansion. And that's exactly what this study will do. It'll identify those needs, our current market, our future market, and tell us what to do. We're ready to spend that money. We're holding up, make sure we're on target, and that if it does come out not only for the renovations but for future building, that we do that. And I know councilperson Ty Rock has a great affinity for the kitchen, and that's exactly one item that right now it's in a location.
Just at the Mayburn Center, though. Let me get that straight. Just at the Mayburn Center.
Yeah, just at the Mayburn Center. But, yes. But that if we were to just renovate, it might be in the right location. But if we want to expand, in fact, we may want to move it. And that's what we would want this study to tell us before we go out and spend the money. We don't want to spend it twice, we want to spend it once. But we agree with you that this isn't going to sit on the shelf, it's going to go into action.
Thank you. Let me just take this opportunity to recognize Chuck Ram, who's sitting with us this evening, and his entire staff at the Mayburn Center. I have the opportunity to go out there quite frequently for different events, and they do an absolutely wonderful job. We've got a facility that's over 20 years old, and you still bring in great conferences and conventions into our community, and it's a great civic center as well that serves this community well. And you all serve everyone that comes into that facility in a first-class way. And so, Chuck, great job, thanks to your staff, and thanks for your leadership.
Chuck, in the work study, in the work session, we discussed your name earlier, and I just also want to say thank you. And I also want to point out that you're a gentleman who came back to your roots of Temple, Texas, brought your family, you're raised with my family here, and you're employed here, and I want to say thank you. Also, I want to say the great job that you do, you know I'm very proud, but yes, that kitchen, we've got to do something out there.
Hit that screwdriver out of you.
Yeah, I wouldn't even go there. But, you know, when our Twister comes and has holiday, Taste of the Holidays, I mean, you're serving 700 people. I mean, they're scrambling in that kitchen, and there's a lot of issues, and I appreciate your openness when we come in and talk to you. And I said in the work session earlier, I hope we get some women to discuss that kitchen because there's some issues in there that really need to be addressed. And yes, I know Tracy Bernard does not have a male on the finance department, but this is a different situation, okay? So, I just want to say thank you for the job you did.
One other thing we also talked about, we do have the architects and the people who are going to do the study are the type of firms that we will have the capability of staying with us. One of the partner on your TBS is an architect firm, and if we go into further work, we'd have the capability, same, work with them, that we're going to start with them.
Thank you, Mr. Scrub. Other questions, council, for Mr. Scrub or Mr. Ram concerning the Mayburn Center or the study? There being none, I'll entertain a motion for item 4E.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have motion, a second, to approve item 4E. Is there further discussion? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Pluton Tallow?
Aye.
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 Next item under the regular agenda, Board Appointments. Consider adopting a resolution appointing five regular members and two alternate members to the North Central Temple Neighborhood Code Enforcement Board. Mr. Ram.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. At your last meeting, we created our first Neighborhood Code Enforcement Board, and for those in the audience, that's our board in which we try to get neighbors, residents of an area involved in their neighborhoods, cleaning them up, getting code compliance and those kind of things. And not too surprisingly, that first board was in the historic district because they do really have a strong neighborhood association there. For that application that you approved, we had, I think, as I recall, about 25 to 30 people sign that initial application. You created that district and board at your last meeting, and now on this agenda you have under your consideration the appointment of five regular members and two alternate members to consider for that board.
Could we clarify, you said in the historic district, I want to clarify that the thing we created is much larger than the historic.
It is, yeah. The area covered by this district is from Adams to Nugent, and on the east from Third Street, Clareover to the BNSF property. So, you did that at the last meeting. Just, my point was simply that that is a very active organization there. So, you have five names tonight for consideration, and you have actually five regular members to appoint and two alternates. And so, I do have reviewed these applications. They are, these individuals are, do meet the criteria. They are all adult residents of that area. They are among the people that signed the petition hoping for the creation of this board. They do meet the criteria, and I do recommend for your consideration the appointment of these five people, and as regular members, and we will come back to you with alternate members. Just so you know, in addition to these board members, they are sitting on the board, and if the case does have to go to enforcement issue, it would go to this board. But the real intent, and I think purpose behind this board is really to get voluntary compliance in these neighborhoods. And so, the other component of that is appointment of what are called neighborhood facilitators in this program. And that those individuals are actually appointed by the city manager, and we do have four or five residents in that area who have signed up to be facilitators in that area, and we'll be bringing those appointments to the city manager to review as well. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ram. Council, any questions? Those five members that are recommended for approval are Teresa Campos, Joni Lang, Richard Marco, Bill Ray Owen, and Sylvia Ray. Those five would be regular members. Presumed none of them are alternates. The alternates will be brought back at a later date for a future meeting. So, we have those five individuals who are recommended for appointment to the North Central Temple Neighborhood Code Enforcement Board. Is there a motion to appoint those individuals to that position?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion, a second, for the appointment of those five individuals. Is there further discussion? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Pluton Tallow?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlin?
Aye.
Aye. Mayor Tannen?
Aye. Next item is item 6. Consider adopting a resolution confirming the appointment of Tiffany Howard as a deputy city attorney. Mr. Ram.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I guess about a month ago, the council really created a challenge for our office when you hired one of our attorneys as the new city judge. We have been advertising, and pleased to tell you, we had a really large qualified pool of applicants, probably the largest I've had for any vacancy since I started 18 years ago. We had over 30 applicants, all of them very well qualified for this position, interviewed a number of people. Now, can you pull that in? And you may be aware that under the city charter, I have the authority to appoint an assistant or assistance, subject to the Dutchan approval, but it does require confirmation by the city council. And so, I am here today, and we have selected as a result of that interview Tiffany Howard, and we have, she is very pleased to have her as an applicant and recommend her. She is currently working as a Bell County prosecuting attorney, and she's been an assistant district attorney, lots of practical and experience in Texas law as a prosecutor and other things. She is a graduate, I think, I believe, it doesn't say that up there, but at the University of Southern California undergraduate, went to the University of San Diego for her master's, where my wife also went to school, and went to the University of Houston for her law degree. We were just very impressed with Ms. Howard, and we're very excited to have her coming on board. I'm afraid we may be going to war with the county over this. The word I've gotten back from the county attorney is that we are taking one of his best and brightest. And, you know, we do check references, we interviewed her, but we, everybody that we called who actually has been working with her just said the same thing, that she's extremely hardworking, very organized, and that we're very lucky to have her. So, I'm very excited to recommend to you hiring her, and we are proposing to start her in a salary of $60,000.
Thank you.
I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, but I would like to invite Ms. Howard up and meet the council, and she may want to make some comments and introduce herself as well.
Ms. Howard?
Thank you. I would say may it please the council.
You're starting off on the right foot.
If you prefer not to stand in one place, I do have a microphone that, and you may use this if you'd like, or you may use the podium and that microphone. You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the people of Temple, to serve this humble and honorable council, serve Mr. Graham, and also find Judge, Judge Kathleen Barina. I'm looking forward to it, to, as I said, serving Temple, Texas. It's a great city. I've toured the city. I have family members that also live in Temple, Texas, and I've lived all over the country, probably 15 different cities, and Temple is a fine city, so I'm happy to be here. And I look forward to seeing all of you and working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Is there a motion to confirm Ms. Tiffany Howard as the new deputy city attorney?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have motion, a second, to approve Tiffany Howard as a deputy city attorney for the City of Temple. Further discussion? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Jeter?
Aye.
Mayor Pluton Tallow?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Tannen?
Aye. Ms. Howard, welcome to the City of Temple. Next item on the agenda is item 7. Consider adopting a resolution designating a council member to serve in the mayor's position on the Temple Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. The agreement between TEDC and the City of Temple stipulates of one of the positions on the TEDC Board is for the mayor. Over the next year to 18 months, there's a possibility of a conflict of interest for me and my business by me serving on the TEDC Board. And I would like to, at this time, resign my position on the TEDC Board of Directors, and I would like to recommend that an appointment of Mr. Tony Jeter to fill that position so that there are two council members serving on that board be approved by the city council, and that's a position that would be approved until his successor is appointed. And Mr. Graham, have I read that correctly?
That is correct. The resolution provides that the appointment would be for a period of six months, and would be reviewed at the end of that unless the contract which specifies which council member serve on that board is amended before that.
Okay.
It would be for six months, and if we didn't amend the contract in that period, we would bring back an item for your consideration at that time.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. So, that is the six-month appointment. Asking Mr. Jeter to serve in that position, and I have discussed this with him, and he is willing to serve council, so I would ask for a motion for approval of Mr. Jeter to fill my position on the TEDC Board of Directors.
I would like a discussion, please.
Okay.
I just want to bring up a discussion that makes mine. In 2000, I was elected to the city council to run and represent the voters of my district. I had no premonition of an appointment to a board. I came on to represent the voters of the district. It's been brought to my attention by Mr. Jeter that he ran, he stated to be appointed and hopefully could be on the TEDC Board. And he said to me that if he was not appointed to the TEDC Board last Friday, that he would not approve any motion brought from the TEDC Board. That makes my heart very sad for this district, for the city. And Mr. Jeter, I understand that the mayor does have some possible, in the near future, negotiations with Primus, and so he feels as though it's best he step down. But in the past, there's been negotiation with Primus, with his property, and he did not step down. So, I just want you to know, I feel as though this motion is basically an emotional decision, so there can be an appointment of you to TEDC. And with that, I want you to know I cannot vote in favor of this.
Well, you just need to have some of your facts straight, Ms. Ty Rock. There's never been any point in time when I've been in negotiation with the Primus for the sale of my property. There was a point where there was a sale of property that was adjoining my property, which it impacted the value of my property, so for the purpose of any negotiations, discussions that the city council had with Primus, that I did step away in all discussions, never sat in a single meeting until the final action was taken, in which point I abstained from the vote. So, that, just for the record, to straighten out that particular comment. So, are there any other comments or discussion by the board?
I have just a quick response. I guess based on the people who are listening, the people out there are going to have to make to have to make a decision whether they believe that or not. That was not what I said. So that's all the response that would need to be had, but, I mean, you know me, you know her, make your decision.
One of the things that I would also like to be known is that with this motion, it's my understanding that Mr. Blackburn will be put to the executive board. And if this motion is approved, I would feel as though that we need to have the tenure that the city council member who has that now, who is Mr. Blackburn, I mean, who is Mr. Schneider, sit on the executive board. So that's also something I feel as though needs to also be discussed at this time.
That sounds appropriate, because there's not a change in the, of the agreement between, between the city, and it stipulates in that agreement that it could be the mayor or the city manager. And from a consistency sake, Mr. Blackburn attends every board meeting of TEDC, knows fully what's going on at TEDC, so there's plenty of consistency there. Mr. Schneider?
I was going to ask, would that, that would be a decision of the board, of TEDC? Or is that just as far as, I mean, that would be a decision of the board?
No, I think it's a, I think it's a decision by the city. The agreement provides that either the city manager or the mayor can serve on the executive committee. And if you approve this resolution, you're appointing Mr. Jeter to sit in the mayor's position on the board, so it could be either Mr. Blackburn or Mr. Jeter on the executive committee.
On the executive committee? No, I don't think so. I think the way the, it reads is it's the mayor or the city manager have the position on...
As the resolution is to appoint Mr. Jeter to sit in your place on the board?
On the board, correct. And there's not, and there's not a provision for the, for a council member to sit on the board of the executive committee.
I think we need to probably bring that back, that item, separate item for consideration.
At a different time.
The resolution is to appoint Mr. Jeter to the board.
To my board.
Right.
To the position on the board.
I think, I think we will have a question at that point. If he is sitting on the board in the mayor's position, does he have the right, sitting in your position, to sit on the executive committee? We probably should bring that back to the next meeting for your consideration.
Okay. That'd be an, that'd be a change to the agreement between the city and TEDC.
Yeah, and I guess my, my, my comment was that the TEDC board would have some discussion on any other changes or proposal of changes in the contract. So that board would have some idea who, you know, suggestions or whatever would sit on whatever.
Both parties would have to agree to change it.
Exactly. That was my vote.
Both parties.
I just thank you. I just, I appreciate the discussion.
Sure. Is there a motion for the appointment of Mr. Jeter to fill the position that I'm vacating?
I move that Councilmember Jeter be appointed to serve in the mayor's position on the Temple Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, further discussion? There being none, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Jeter?
I love it. I love it. You can... Aye.
Mayor President Tallo?
No.
Councilmember Berlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda for the seat. Thank you very much for your attendance. The air show begins tomorrow night at 6:30 and runs tomorrow night and all day Saturday and Sunday afternoon. And please be out there and pray for good weather. Mr. Blackburn?
Mayor, can I have two minutes?
You may.
If, if we haven't lost. The solid waste services...
We are, we are still in session, ladies and gentlemen. We have not been adjourned. Please, you're free to leave, but if you'll be, please be quiet in doing so.
My apologies. Brush collection services, as, as I wanted to put in a real quick word, we are, we completed this week, just earlier this week, our initial pickup throughout the whole city on our, on our brush event that occurred over Easter weekend, which has, has been widely reported, and I will go over to all the details about that. We'll be issuing a press release or media release here shortly, but I did want to make sure that formally in the council meeting that we were apprising council, as well as those here, that we had completed that initial run. We're going to make another sweep through the city over the next few days to kind of go back and, and make sure we hit all the spots. But we did just an outstanding job. I appreciate the work in solid wasted, streets, parks. Multiple departments were involved, multiple assets and resources to, in essence, pick up about a year's worth of brush in literally a matter of days and weeks on the ground out there. That was just an exceptional effort by all. Appreciate the work that they did.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Congratulations to, to all the departments that participated in that effort. Thank you on behalf of all of our citizens, because I've had several phone calls about that, thanking us for getting that done as expeditious, as expeditiously as we did. So thanks to all concerned. Is there anything else? If there's nothing else for the city council this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.